All right, thank you. I'm gonna call the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners regular agenda session for June 13th, 2024 to order. I'm gonna acknowledge that Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Booth are online with us. And with that, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Key, who is our resident in-house preacher, to do our invocation and pledge to believe.
Well, thank you for this opportunity for us all to come together to seek your wisdom as we do business with the people that we surround ourselves with. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go to the approval of the agenda. We do have a closed session item, or two, got two closed session items, so I can add that to, it says if needed, but we do need it. So we have a closed session item. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Yes, on the other items, I would like to add the item 4B, the Consolidated Parking Record Operations Agreement.
4B.
Is this your pen?
All right. With that, with those two adjustments, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. That will take us to our presentation. Commissioner Jones is online, so I'll do this. She asked if this matter be put onto the agenda for the Cape Fear Regional Theater to make a presentation. Mr. Manager, I think we have, who are, what are y'all gonna do? Oh, y'all double teaming today. That's two and a half minutes each. Okay. Because it was five. That's two and a half each. And we are glad to have the Cape Fear Regional Theater here today. Welcome. We were just together at the Downtown Visionaries. Munch.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us.
If you could get closer to the mic.
Most definitely. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Mary Kate Burke. I'm the artistic director of the Cape Fear Regional Theater.
And I'm Ella Ren. I'm the managing director of the Cape Fear Regional Theater.
I see you. Thank you. He was like trying to help us to sound. Okay, magic. Well, thank you so much for inviting us. The last time we came here was in August of 2021. And so we wanted to update you. And thank you, because your signed letters, the county commissioners, for the support of this project enabled us to secure the state funding, which is when we came before you last.
Here we go. I think I can read that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, one at a time.
Okay, some quick facts about us. We are a 501(c)(3). We have 14 full-time employees. Our annual operating budget is $2 million. Every year, we hire over 200 artists from the state and regionally. We serve 53,000 people annually, including 20 youth.
20,000.
20,000, thank you. And our audience is a perfect reflection of the county we serve, with more than 50% of our audience is being diverse. We produce five main stage shows each year that attract award-winning talent from around the country. And this coming season, we are the only theater in the state of North Carolina to receive project support for musical theater from the National Endowment for the Arts. We are now the largest producing theater between Charlotte and Raleigh. And so the difference here between the event center that you're building downtown and the work that we do is all of the work that we're doing at the Cape Fear Regional Theater is built in Fayetteville. So the casts are hired, they rehearse here. It's kind of like the difference between, like, we like to think of it as the difference between an Olive Garden and Antonella's. The Olive Garden, both exist, right? And sometimes you want those free breadsticks, those unlimited breadsticks. And sometimes you want some pan-seared salmon. Both coexist in our community beautifully, and they support each other. In the field, we are a remarkable investment. We impact more people with fewer resources than our counterparts. In fact, each dollar invested at CFRT stretches two to three times as far as in our peer organizations. And the word is getting out about the Cape Fear Regional Theater. We are delighted to announce that we recently received funding from the Kenan Foundation, which is based in Chapel Hill to support our education program. So every year, 10,000 youth from our community come and see our student matinee series, which allows youth to see the show for $10 to $13 during the day, whereas at night, the ticket prices between $25 and $37. And that $250,000 annual subsidy is something that Cape Fear Regional Theater goes out and independently fundraises for. And we're delighted that the Kenan Foundation is joining us this year so that all youth in our Tier One county can access the arts regardless of their economic status.
There we go. We also produce an incredible amount of youth programming. This is a picture from our summer camp last year. We are in the thick of it this year. We'll reach more than 300 kids over the course of the summer with arts engagement. And last year, a young woman named Tabitha went straight from our summer camp to the Broadway production of Days of Wine and Roses. And she is but one of many examples of people who started their careers on our stage and here in Fayetteville, and went on to big illustrious careers.
Additionally, we offer scholarships to all of our youth programming so that everybody can participate regardless of their economic status. And it is worth mentioning that right now, we're turning away 25% of the youth who want to participate in our programs, because we do not have enough space. So every single one of our education programs.
I have enough space.
Yeah, we don't have enough space. So every single one of our education programs currently turns away 25% of the people who want to participate, but they can't because there's not enough room. Great. This is our, Phase One was our renovation of the auditorium itself. That was completed, and the facility, the auditorium reopened in December of 2021, and has been greeted with an enormous amount of enthusiasm from the community. We launched that phase during the pandemic, and we like to think that it has aged significantly, because in 2020, we looked like this. Oh, dang it, blew my punchline. And now we look like this. Phase Two is.
No, you went to go on, we didn't.
No, no, we went back. We went back. Thanks, God. No. Phase Two is everything in the green here. So it's everything. So we did Phase One with an eye towards Phase Two. And one of the things that we've been very strategic about is to never spend money twice. So our building is passed by about a million cars per month, according to the Department of Transportation. This is it. It sits at the corner of Highland Avenue and Hay Street, and it is an integral intersection to the vanguard of downtown. And we are going to transform this building, everything you saw in green, we're going to transform this into this. I want to talk about a couple of the key changes, just so everybody is aware of the work that we're doing. So you will see that the main entrance is now on Highland Avenue. That is a very busy intersection. And it is roads that are owned by both the city and the state. So getting those two entities to work together is quite complicated. And so we're making the entrance on Highland Avenue because it is safer. You will see there's also a drop-off zone for vehicles, so that if you are mobily, have mobile challenges, or if you are one of the 20,000 youths, you can join us through this new entrance on this quieter, safer street. We are also having two dedicated classroom spaces. So all those youths who are not able to participate with us now, that will no longer be a challenge. And that, right now, we have no dedicated classroom space. We're gonna have a lobby that is open to the public during the day, and we're gonna have a rooftop experience that will allow us to host events that we turn away, like pining ceremonies, baptisms, various wedding events. And we're gonna continue to produce our award-winning work inside of our theater. And two years ago, when we came here, a very smart council member, Commissioner, Council, rather, asked us the question, what are you gonna do about your parking problem? I don't know if you remember that, but in whatever room that we were in, somebody always asked which, what we were, how we're gonna solve our parking. And so we're excited to announce that we also have a solution for that. We are building a parking lot that is going to be open to the public across the street. It will pick up between 60 and 65 parking spaces that will be used for the whole community. So the way that we're developing this project is in conversation with all of the different aspects of community development. We're currently at $15.6 million raised. So we have raised that money quietly over the past two years. We believe this project is gonna cost between $20 and $22 million. And we've had individual conversations with a lot of various members of the commissioners. And we're here today both to update you on the project and let you know that the shovel-ready project, like the county, will provide quality services while being fiscally responsible, and will help you grow as a destination for employment and entertainment and cultural pursuits. And we're asking you to keep us top of mind as you move through your fiscal year. We know you had a very difficult budget cycle with a lot of hard decisions. But we generate sales tax revenue, occupancy tax, food and beverage tax. And after this project is complete, I imagine you will see an increase in the property values for the area, which will continue to grow the local economy and generate revenue for the county. And we haven't announced this yet, but we're asked to cut the presentation back a little bit. So we're gonna email you. But we have a video from Grammy Award winner Fables on Natasha Bet Williams.
Am I in it?
There are, Commissioner, I'm sitting. There are pictures of you in it. Do you wanna see it? Did we just buy ourselves a minute? All right. They took it away, but we will email it to you. They took it away, yeah, because we were trying to tighten it up. We're trying to cut five minutes off our presentation. But what I will say to you is, we'll send it to you afterwards. And we're really excited to announce that she's also returning to Fayetteville to perform on our stage on July 27th and 28th. And you will all be welcome to come. But this is the work that we're doing. And the thing is, you don't know if the next Natasha Bet Williams is out there. And we're training these youths. And with our training, it's also supporting your Crown Events Center, because 80% of ticket hires as adults came to the arts as youths through all of the programs that we do at the Cumberland County Schools. And so we would just love to be top of mind as you move through this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll tell you, and I'm excited from Natasha to come back. I think when she came and she went up to the theater, those kids were just energized. And then she went around the community to a number of different schools. She graduated from Cape Fear High School, won the Tony Award, so right here. And she came down, meeting, and we presented her. So thank you all so very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
That will take us to the consideration of agenda items. Mr. Manager, was the contract amendment for the security services with North State Security Group?
Yes, bring to me Jackson, our social services director, will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing us to come before you.
Can you pull that mic up just a little bit? It's just sometimes hard to hear back over here.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Great, great.
I mean, because of the noise back up in the air.
The purpose of the contract amendment is to support security provided by our one county deputy sheriff by continuing to maintain three armed security guards at our main building on Ramsey Street, and one armed security guard at our family resource center in Spring Lake. The security, armed security guard at our Spring Lake location also supports not only social services, but public health and the public library that are located at that location. The three-year contract that we have with North State is scheduled to expire June 30th in a few weeks. We have gone through the RFP process. However, with timing, we're asking for a contract amendment to extend the current contract with North State from July 1, 2024 to December 31st, 2024.
With the same, with the same.
Company with North State.
With the same condition, I mean.
Yes, sir, with the same conditions.
I'll take a motion to extend the contract from July 1 through.
December 2nd.
You got a motion, you got a motion, you got a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Amendments to the Fayette Area Commissioners Bureau bylaws, Mr. Manager?
Yes, Debbie, he's CEO of Fayette CBB. Will come and present this item and answer the questions you have.
Come on up, sir.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry, I had been running all morning with the US Open and everything going on, so we are.
You can help on that.
So we are asking.
What the tiger shoot today?
Unfortunately, I haven't been able to get to buyers. We'll do a shuttle transportation over for our hotel guests. So we're transporting them from our area hotels as an added value so that we can encourage visitors to come back and realize the great experiences they can have here in Cumberland County. So we are asking for approval of bylaw changes. Our organization has not changed or adjusted our bylaws in quite a few years. There is a clause in, in, in a, in Article, Article 12, that is in our bylaws that requires, and we're not, Mr. Morfield and I both are not quite sure why it's in there, but it is certainly our pleasure to present our bylaws to you all. Article four and.
Y'all used to be in the county. That's probably why we edited off. That's probably why I was.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Everybody gives up complete control.
And we are, we are perfectly fine with continuing that, that tradition. We are happy. But the only material changes in Article four that are really, Article four really pertains to the meetings. Our annual membership meeting, we want to move that from January to September. Our annual meeting of the Board of Directors, we want to move that from January to May. And then we have been actually doing regular meetings, scheduled meetings. Instead of quarterly, we're gonna do them now every other month on the third Wednesday of that other, of that second month. So those are the only material changes that we are asking for approval.
I think Commissioner Key, you sit on that board, and I guess you are involved in all of that, so I give you a moment.
I made a motion to approve. We've gone over this.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I guess I'll Google, see. Grant of easement to the City of Fayetteville for warning sewer line adjustments to the Ray Avenue and Library property. We've been working on this for about four years. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Nick Morfield, County Attorney, will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
It was gonna fall off the creek, remember? The whole, the whole thing was gonna fall off.
Yeah, it didn't see closed session.
We had an emergency closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I know what you're talking about, but this is.
This is different.
Okay, this is watered sewers, McSays and Ray Avenue. And the drawing that we had to look at was just so much stuff on it, and it was so big that I did look at it and mapped it out. And it's my opinion that this easement will not affect the use of the library except during construction, because there is a temporary construction easement around both of these. It's not gonna stop access or anything, but it will certainly have some impact. It's, it's for water and sewer improvements. Does it, and I looked at it, but does it change any of our parking on that side next to Lever?
No, it's adjacent to Ray, Ray Ave. On that side where the, where the park is on that side.
Yeah, where the roundabout is coming out. It's, I take a motion to grant the easement for $5,000 to the City of Fayetteville. Motion to approve the easement to the City of Fayetteville.
Second, can I ask a question?
You may.
So what is the situation with that parking lot? I don't know. I mean, they have, I know they have disconnected the drain pipe that ran out of the county parking lot.
Was that recently? Because I went out probably six months ago, and I still had the cones up there.
The cones were, they're out there. We haven't moved the cones. Because we repaired it, I'm gonna say, in February 22.
The library parking lot? Where the slope is everywhere, and we injected, injection brad, that pulls it off, repaired
the slope.
So let me ask you this, though, when you did that, because we had the problem in the front that the pipe wasn't big enough, and the City of Fayetteville wouldn't give us the, did they finally give us the ability to do that in the front? Because if not, I don't know why I'm giving them easement. I'm just, you know, not, not of a tip-to-tap, but, you know, we all play in the same sandbox.
It's my understanding, man, but you're correct with wrong, that the drain that run from, from Maiden Lane, I guess it is, to the creek there was closed off by the city. Is that correct? Did they reroute the?
They rerouted around that, yes.
Oh, okay. All right. So, and you have now fueled.
Yes.
The pipeline under the.
Good luck. Yes, we injection braded that, yes.
There's a motion and a second to grant the easement to the City of Fayetteville. All those in favor? That is unanimous. That takes us to the grant of the easement to the Piedmont Natural Gas South River Electric. Mr. Morfield?
Yes, I'm gonna get down to it. This, if you can come in here. I want you to put the drawings in the ring, or the little maps that are in your agenda package on the screen. Is it something you were talking about?
Mr. Chairman, while they're confirming where we, remember, this is just to move it to the consent agenda.
So let me, let me go back. Thank you, Commissioner Faircliff. All of these that are, that we voted on, the three that we voted on is to move it to the consent agenda on Monday's meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Faircliff.
This is two separate easement requests in the industrial center, one by Piedmont Natural Gas, the other by South River Electric. But I'm presenting them together because the cumulative impact of these easements is much more significant than you want if you move them alone. The best way I can describe it, just kind of give you bearings, this large area down here is what we call the Sand Hill Road Site. This, this building here, this is off of Technology Drive. This is the parcel that was sold to Skyland about two years or three years ago. And they built that as a spec building, which is not occupied. The county owns across Technology Drive, this is a vacant lot. And the county owns this odd-shaped lot that's in the park there. And then, of course, this is Sand Hill Road Site, which is over 100 acres. What we already have there, this cleared area is a series of easements. The biggest one is 100-foot overhead transmission line to DuPont. And in addition to that, there are gas line, sewer line. The totality of these in this area is about down 170 feet. What Piedmont is asking for is a new 50-foot wide, he's running, running right next to that, down to, this is a little triangle end of the Sand Hill Road Site. Right back down to this, falls here, and then this is the lot that was sold to Piedmont back in February this year, where they moved their regulator station. They agreed they would stop driving on this, all this kind of stuff. And they got their, their show of business, and they do, they did that, and I said, so walk by drive, I mean, which they are using. The problem with that is it now makes, and this does go along with the property around here, but here it just splits, I mean, all of this just splits this lot. And to give you an idea of how much that impact that, that whole wide area is, a square acre is 208 feet by 208 feet. So each 200 feet, you're covering an acre length of this now. That's how much, of course, that's not, that's not the only thing they put their place down, but it's just a different impact. Down here in this corner, and the board had agreed that with the best use possible, just joined in with this lot instead of having to haul all this stuff from the Sand Hill Road Site. They were working on that, but with this now.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're gonna confuse me. Where are you talking about running the easement?
All right, first, it's from this property around here.
But, okay, so let me ask you this question. But I don't own that piece, so are you getting the easement from the people who do the spec building? Or are you there trying to do it on the whole side?
It's all in this property. The county owns this lot and this lot.
Right, okay.
All these easements are plenty of property.
Okay.
The green, the orange is now what South River Electric owns. It's a 100-foot wide overhead transmission line. It is for, that's the new power to get powered for banking therapy. It's offset from the property line because there's existing 30-foot sewer line easement all over there, too. And so that, that just kind of, just to give you an idea of what, you know, what's involved.
And, so the piece of property that we own at the top.
Yeah.
To the left.
Up here.
Right. If we give them that easement, then what does it do to our property to be able, or can we do anything on that property, to start with?
You basically just got, you've got two, you'll have to make these two parcels.
I can't hear you.
You'll have to make these two parcels, because this is such a wide area of, of two, overhead transmission line, you know, all set and ground. I don't really think it's useful for any industrial purpose.
Except for setbacks. So as we talk about this, have we talked to the Economic Development Board as to what it might have impact? Because I know that we're doing some stuff on Sand Hills, on that Sand Hill site, hopefully.
I've got a drawing. I'm gonna get to that. Just, I'm just trying to lay it out first.
When did Robert get to?
I'm telling you, Robert, it's, it's getting moving over there. Piedmont is, 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 their offer is 100, was 147,000, but they, the group that was doing this didn't know that another group had purchased the 1 acre in February, and they were running this thing on their own land, too. And that is going to reduce their offer by about $10,000. So for what Piedmont, Piedmont Natural Gas, this breaks it down, what they're totally using for this easement is 4.1 acre. They're, they evaluated the property at, I don't see that up here, but it's about $36,000 an acre. They're saying that the pipe runs in eastern area, took 80% of the value of that. So that's how they came up with the rest of it is for, well, this is no longer there, but temporary easements for construction stuff, and they're paying for the loss of trees. The total, and the numbers they come up with and all this, I think are fine in terms of their values. And so they're, they're in the $137,000.
Wouldn't this make our Sand Hill sites more valuable, because we need the gas out there to be able for companies coming? Does it allow us to have access to gas as it moves through there?
We've already got gas there. I mean, the, the, the gas is, this is, this is an improvement to their system. I mean, obviously, anything they do to improve their system is helpful to industrial sites, but that's, I'm just trying to give you an idea of that.
Mr. McGee, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, that's why I knew that Sand Hill site. This is it. And, and, and this is just, this is a proposed site, right? This is not anything anybody's doing right now. What, what South River is asking in terms of the compensation for their line, is they have an existing line on the Sand Hill Side, most of these, this side, when the rock is working over, crosses in the parking area down, and South River has to move, to move that to the edge of the park. Is that correct? So that, that's what South River is offering as compensation for its, its use. So that, that's what South River is, is, is offering as a compensation for its, its, uh, use, or its, the use of the, taking of the, uh?
So, I guess my question, now that Robert's on it. There is no inherent, um, demolition of any value to us, or a property that we can't use, or a tax property that's valuable, turn it into invaluable property? That's all, that's kind of what I'm trying to.
This is absolutely, uh, removal of the line and relocating it out, your prime site. It's absolutely critical to maximizing its potential. You've just expended three heads of gold with the other. And the other side just pointed there, where the Piedmont line is proposed to run, it is a friendly project, which is absolutely critical to those winning deals and loss for gas. But also, um, I have, we want y'all to be able to build every ounce of your property. Uh, early in January, after the torrent cap, I pushed my way through some of that. It is so wet that our wetlands engineers said we won't even, they came out and said, we're not gonna charge you, we're not gonna walk you. You can't go anywhere with it. So Piedmont, straighten their gas line there, is a good use of that alternate property that runs.
That's what you're talking about, Robert?
Yes, yes.
So, um, if I can get a motion to approve the grant of the utility easement to Piedmont Nat, does somebody wanna say something?
No, I made that motion.
Piedmont Natural Gas and South River.
Got the motion.
Is this, and seconded by Commissioner Boos. All those in favor? They raised their hand. Kitchen, that's unanimous. Alright, that takes us to the revision of the minimum housing code.
Yes, and get down. Uh, this is, this is just a rewrite of the minimum housing code. There were two purposes in, in that. Oh, and one, one of the, part of the missing thing is we have, what, the new, chapter one sixty D allowed this, uh, a new provision for abandoned structures. And, uh, the years I have been here, the only thing that's ever been brought to the board in terms of demolition has been an abandoned structure. So that is useful, uh, I think, and, and the most efficient way for the county to deal with those, uh, in, in student minimum housing codes. So the amendments, what I've done is bring the language up to date with the new chapter one sixty D stuff. And replace the former language for non-residential buildings, which, which actually came from the building code, uh, provision in, in one sixty D, with this abandoned structure. And the board already approved that, doing that back, uh, with the finding and purpose that had been adopted earlier, and so I can move forward with this. The other aspects of it are, I, I expect that we will have, be doing significant, uh, demolition work in the towns with the, under the process the board now has in place. And there were two provisions in the minimum housing code statute that only applied within corporate limits. So I have added those. They were not something that was needed for the county. That's the reason why they don't order us in the past. But, but they were needed to do these towns. So that's, uh, all, all, I'm just.
You've had an opportunity to, uh, to, uh, look at the revisions that were sent to you. Can I get a motion to approve the revision of the minimum housing code?
So.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, we'll have to have a public hearing. This stuff will be after us. I'll go ahead and do that for you.
Yes, thank you. We'll bring that back, uh, we'll get that, bring the public here. Which probably won't be Monday, but it'll be at, uh, August meeting.
And if that's okay, there's not really any reason to bring this back on the, on the.
No, the public housing. Alright, uh, that takes us to the termination of water utility agreement. Uh, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Jermaine Walker, Director of Engineering Infrastructure, will present this item. And the very next item, cause they both, um, relate to each other.
They relate to each other, the same people.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Uh, this, this first item before you is a request from J. Franklin Johnson III Investments. Uh, they're requesting to terminate, uh, a subdivision that was planned, uh, called the, uh, the Deer Meadows subdivision, uh, project. It was approved by the board in February of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the developer is asking that the project be canceled and that the capacity, uh, for a water, uh, supply, uh, to this subdivision be directed to, uh, subdivision that'll be brought forward in the next, uh, next item. And we're requesting that this be approved and it go forward, uh, to the twenty, uh, June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting as a consent item. And also to the Grace Creek Water and Sewer District Governor's Board.
So basically, they're not gonna do the Deer Meadow subdivision?
No, sir.
But we had a water service utility agreement.
We did, yes, sir.
Did we do anything with that? Did it cost us any money?
Didn't cost us any money.
Didn't do anything, okay. If I can get a motion, and let's start, you have some questions, to terminate the water service utility agreement.
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Alright.
The next item, the same developer is asking to, to build, uh, another subdivision in a different location. And that they're asking to install a seven hundred and forty feet of eight inch water line with fifteen, uh, individual, uh, domestic water service connections. And all costs are gonna be paid by the, uh, real estate investor.
Has that been, that, they, they didn't need rezoning, so it's already approved for whatever they wanna do with it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Any questions from anybody? If not, I'll take a motion to do the water service utility agreement with JFJ III Investment for Tri-County Subdivision.
Move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Alright, that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Walker. That will take us to the updated federal, or the FAMPO memorandum of understanding and boundary lane. Uh, I think Mr. Hank Graham has done that, but I think the, um, county attorney has reviewed it and the manager has reviewed it. Uh, I think, I sit on FAMPO and FAMPO approved it. If I can get a motion to approve the updated federal, uh, uh, FAMPO memorandum of understanding and boundary map?
So, move.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Alright, that is unanimous. Thank you. Lease agreement with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture Plant, Plant Industry Division.
Yes, Brian Hany, uh, Assistant County Manager and Swiss Army knife, will, uh, present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Oh, let me tell y'all, uh, this, uh, Brian, while Brian is here, I was over at the downtown visionary luncheon. Uh, I want you all to know that Brian did an excellent job. They were oohing and aahing over the, uh, Crown Event Center. Uh, and, uh, Brian, congrats, you did a great job. With Diane, uh, she was there and, uh, they all did, Jermaine was there. They did an excellent job representing the county, uh, extremely well, Mr. Manager, so I want you to know that.
They got a lot of Swiss Army knives. They do a lot of, they did great things.
Uh, they did, they did, they did wonderful.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, so this item is a lease agreement with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture's Plant Industry Division to continue their existing lease of three hundred and sixty-eight square feet of space in the Agro Expo Center for operation of their witchweed program. Uh, this is, I'm sorry, it, it is, uh, witchweed, making sense how it, it's an invasive species of plant that they're responsible for removing in the area. They've had a lease of this space, uh, for this purpose since two thousand and twelve. And the proposed lease term would extend through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six at a cost of, uh, five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars per year, or four hundred and sixty dollars per month. And the language in the renewal is, is the same as the previous lease.
We think you're gonna make that motion. I could go on for a while. You can, you can.
I'm assuming we include utility, insurance, janitorial, and then all the.
So the county does provide utilities and janitorial services, uh, but does not provide telephone services.
Make a motion. Is there a second?
Okay, second.
There's a motion and a second on the lease agreement with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture to, uh, get rid of these invasive plants. Um, all those in favor? Uh, that is unanimous.
This last not a dollar in years.
Alright, so we now have amendment to the county, uh, purchasing policy.
Brian, you can, you can, like, most of them.
Okay, um, and I will tell the, uh, for the two Commissioners, um, on the line, the manager just held out the first, oh, that's something else, okay. Okay, go ahead, man, that's, no, so this is, I'm in the middle of doing something else, okay. This is not this one that Brian's finna talk about. This one, that's, that's, uh, three, but that's four B, so y'all can hold on from this. That's four B.
So this, this next item is a proposed amendment to the purchasing policy to add bid protest procedures, specifically when FTA or Federal Transit Administration funds are used in procurement. Uh, this was requested by the Community Transportation Program after they received, uh, a, a letter from the NCDOT Integrated Mobility Division following a proficiency review that was conducted in January. And, uh, this request noted a number of deficiencies, one of them related to procurement, and one of this piece added to the county's procurement policy.
So this brings us in line, basically?
It does.
Alright, so if I can get, um, a motion to approve, uh, that amendment, uh, that was sent to you early on the county purchasing policy? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Uh, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Alright, that takes us to, uh, service agreement with Smith Gardner Incorporated.
Amanda Bader, John Manager for Natural Resources, will present this item and answer any questions you may have. She also has the, the next item also.
So for this item, um, first of all, the board accepted the selection of Smith Gardner in March for solid waste water quality services. And so we're presenting this contract under that solicitation. Um, the county has actually been awarded five point three million dollars in grant money to treat our leachate from the landfill. Our leachate from the landfill does contain Gen X.
Can you do this? Cause we, we are actually in line, and, and some people may not know what that means, so if you can tell them.
Yes, so.
In, 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 in our terms, you're that engineer with all of that, with all the smart.
Okay, so, so the Ann Street landfill has been in operation since nineteen eighty. Part of what we do at the landfill to maintain, um, environmental compliance is we treat the water that is collected in the landfill, um, through rainfall, through garbage collection. And that water has been in contact with so many items that consumers use every day that contain these PFAS compounds. So, what's interesting about our landfill is we have those legacy compounds, which are like your PFAS, PFOA. But we also consistently have a concentration of Gen X and Nafion byproduct too. And, um, just so that you understand what those compounds have to do with, they are exclusively made available works. Um, so we asked the, um, we asked for a grant. We typically, landfill leachate is not eligible for, um, grant applications in your typical wastewater, water quality grounds. Um, it is a wastewater, but we applied under drinking water standard, uh, source water reduction.
Go ahead, yeah.
Source water reduction. So part of our grant is that we have to remove these PFAS compounds to the levels of the drinking water standard.
The new standards?
The new standards. We have to get it out, so.
Kick ass question. That, that, that's a most recent.
Yes.
Reduction that we're already not in compliance with forward.
Right.
So, and, and from what I understand now, PFAS is even in some of the public.
Yes.
Water to a degree.
Yes.
Nobody's in compliance with the new. Right, Mr. Regulation.
So we were early to the game.
We got there early.
We were early to the game and we were successful in getting a lot of grant money towards reducing it from the source. Because eventually we discharged to, uh, Cross Creek Reclamation Plant, and that discharges to the Cape Fear River and creates issues for our neighbors downstream.
She, uh, they did good. They, they saw it coming. We saw the new regs coming, and they applied early to the grant process.
We were very early in the process and therefore we were competitive.
Mr. Manager, you had your hand.
Um, we will talk about some of these, some of the options to address future, uh, landfill issues in close session.
Yes, uh, so if I can get a motion to approve the service agreement with Smith Gardner for the leachate treatment project?
Move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Uh, that is unanimous. Thank you. Oh, you got the next one?
I have the next one.
Okay, that's the on-site fuel supply.
That's the on-site fuel supply. So, um, as you're aware, we've been conducting activities at the landfill that demand, um, more fuel. Um, mainly balefield mining. We're also working on another remediation project at this time. Um, so we, um, entered into a contract. It was approved by the board in, uh, November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, for an amount of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for half of FY twenty-four. Um, we are requesting a revised contract amount, an increase of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for four hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. This is for our on-site fuel supply. And we're asking that the, um, board, um, place this contract amendment on the consent agenda for the June seventeenth meeting.
So basically, we ask for an additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
If I can get a motion to, uh, approve that amendment?
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And that will take us to, um, Mr. Hany on the, uh, Commissioner Bio Format update that he's been working on. I think y'all may, uh, stay like this.
I'm going to try and get this pulled up.
Yeah.
He hates that first. So this was a, um, there's that, I mean. So, uh, this was a request that, uh, the chairman had made about, uh, updating the format of the Commissioner's biographical information on the county webpage. Uh, this would, uh, change the current format, which I'll, I'll walk through to a dropdown menu that will allow for streamlined information, uh, for biographical purposes. Uh, we had to, uh, PIO received the request and had to work with ITS to, to make this change happen on the website. Um, so right now, and, uh, Commissioner Counsel, if you don't mind us using, uh, you as, as our example. Uh, you currently go to this page, uh, where you will click on Read Bio, and it will pop up with additional information in, in long paragraph form. The, uh, the update would streamline that to a dropdown menu with bulleted information in five categories. Those categories being professional information, regional, state, and national leadership, awards, education, and personal information. Uh, so the next steps in this process would be for, uh, to solicit updated information from Commissioners to populate, uh, the updated biographical format.
Alright. That was, uh, uh, information for you to be able to do. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Um, I, um, some Commissioners had said it wasn't enough space to get all of that information on, under the old format, um, so.
Say what? I mean, I'm sorry.
I'm just telling you what we got. So, um, I, uh, I saw, this is kind of modeled after the Wake County, I think, Brian.
Sure, sure.
Wake County has this dropdown menu, uh, for you to put whatever you want to in that. Um, I would, um, um, that's fine. I don't have any problem with that. But I do think in, uh, line of, uh, people who serve on this board, if we could, not necessarily up under this, but somewhere on our website have those old Commissioners on the, on the website. I think it just, it pays homage that it, oh, I'm talking to a little suit. So, I'm gonna just tell you, you remember when we were downstairs, uh, before this room got, they had pictures of all the old Commissioners all around the wall?
They did.
And nobody knows where those are now, so, uh, oh, Sally made them. Sally do.
Thank you for bringing that up, Chairman. Um, PIO did have all of those pictures, and John Scholes has scanned those. So we have digital, uh, record of those. Those need to be gone through and those identification made so that, but that is something that, we had those, he took them out of the frames and they have been scanned, so that information, images, we have.
And so we can put that, uh, on the website somewhere. I mean, you can, we can do, however you want to code it, I don't know. But I just, you know, it was just kind of, when you walked in the room and saw all of that, those black and whites and those colors, and, and, but it was full of, sort of, third before us, so.
We could possibly work with our state and local history department, um, with the library and PIO and, and get that cataloged.
I got a question. Commissioner Stewart.
Can you go back to Commissioner Counsel's, the, the dropdown menu?
Yes, this was an example that was illustrative. It's not intended to.
Okay, I can.
It's not correct yet. It's just, it was.
She just can't see it.
I can't see it, so I'm asking you, let those dropdown menus.
So the first one is professional information, then any regional, state, and national leadership, uh, roles, any awards received, educational information, and then any personal information.
Awards received.
Uh, just any type of.
Why is that important? Yeah.
Yeah. That was, I mean, certainly that can be changed if you, if the board would like that. That was how it was listed, some of the examples we looked at.
So, um, I, I, yeah, I think it was on Wake County's, but I think it's in line with what you receive as a Commissioner. So if you got a state, you know, we had some state presidents, Jeanette was honored as, you went to, when you were honored as a, as a candidate from the State County Commission Association. So in terms of, that's the kind of awards we're talking about, not just awards that you got because you went to high school or you went somewhere else, but.
Thank you for.
Yeah, and, and we'll go through that, but it's those awards that you get pursuant to serving in that role, like what she got in terms of.
Okay, let me add this to that. I believe that Commissioner Council is probably pretty much in a standalone. I know you've done the great ways, but I, I, so I could see that being under professional as opposed to awards and things of that nature because there's more of us that have not.
You would have a little bit.
Which, right? You know, I'm doing that. I'm doing that. But she's, I mean, there's not many of us that have done the things that she's done. And so I can see that under professional as opposed to having a whole slot where we don't have things to put in there or, you know, just make that stuff.
We can consolidate this.
We can consolidate.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Do you need to say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay. And reference to awards, and actually I have this screen full that, you know, I do like their plan, I pulled up this far as Wake County, and I noticed that on there it is a professional awards and I think that is good. Like, some of them are listed as I look on my other screen, some of them have done a lot of community things and they've got awards, like say, if they're qualified, I don't know how professional they might have gotten, you know, at their former job. So it's in, there are awards as I seen, I think that should stay up there. A lot of them have received different awards and some of the rest of us have as well from career. They're listing things, not high school, but they are listing things that are in relation to their professional and I, I think we should keep it like that.
And so I think, yeah, as you do that, we can put that up under those professionals and under those, because that's where that would fall up under, under the professional things and, and that can encompass that.
But I see their, their format, I think the reason they put it separate, because if you've done a lot of professional stuff, that's going to be a long list. Just like, I know it's on here, someone was military, they didn't list a lot, but under awards, they had some of those high-ranking things that they did for, they made it separate because if you've done a lot in your career, it makes sense, like yours looks good, that Dropbox, then the awards would be the different regular awards they get in those different areas instead of a big long block underneath professional. I think we should keep it, you guys might want to go back and actually when you visit it, I don't know if you all have viewed it.
I just, that's what Commissioner.
I don't know if you all have viewed it or not, but maybe if you view it, you, if you actually view the site to see why they have it that way and see the things listed, you'll see there's a purpose for it, so everything won't be so long. Just consider it fresh and go through it. It makes sense when you do it.
I will seek consensus on it, uh, from the Commissioners. We know you want to keep it, any.
Cap confirm, confirm the app if you deactivate all the medical updates, the app will be left.
Professional.
I would just ask that you view it to, you know, we make a decision, we can view it. It's kind of hard to make a decision on something we haven't even looked at.
Well, I think, um, I know I've looked at it and, um, we got yours, but it's a board of seven, so that's why I'm trying to go through the board, people, Commissioner.
Well, of course, that's why I said I think maybe.
Excuse me, hold on, man. Wait a minute.
I mean, you've looked at it, but has the whole board actually looked at their site?
Veronica.
I'm ready.
Veronica. I would recognize you, but I was speaking at that point. So she may, I don't know if y'all have looked at the Wake County site, um, and I will, y'all can go do that. Go ahead, you go ahead and move forward and you can, and we'll come back to that part about their words, but that'll give them an opportunity to look at it and determine whether they want to do that or not, and then we'll come back and, and decide.
I could probably just make a comment, Mr. Chair. I think with sometimes, depending on how long you've been here, would make you more eligible for awards, except in my case. But, dang, why, why are we, why are we doing, why are we doing things to separate us? You know, and we're all Commissioners, we're all responsible to everybody and, you know, somebody's looking at it and you've only been there a few times. They're going to, they're going to, it's not like we're running for office.
That's right.
And, you know, we're, we're just here to give information so the public can contact us and they know a little better about us. And to do, I, I've been with Jeanette, Jeanette's got, we've seen a good number of awards, all, all deserving, but what does that really mean to the public who's looking at this? It's not like she's, you know, the best. Right? Should I just stop with the best? Should I just stop with the best? But, you know, she's not like, you know, salesperson of the month and she's better than anybody. I just think we're looking for opportunities to separate us collectively.
But, you know, we're collective.
Yeah.
But if you go ahead, you can, I think everybody likes to, well, I'm going to keep the drop down, but we will, and then you can bring it back and actually show what it looks like. All right, thank you, Mr. Haney. That will take us to four B, which is the parks and rec. That's the draft that the manager just put in front of you all. I will tell you, before I go to the manager, that I got a letter, email, letter, and a letter from the mayor saying that what we want to approve, a parks and rec amendment, some funds in it. I sent him a letter back saying that hadn't received anything, the board hadn't received anything because the manager has been asking for updated information, but I will let the manager update you as to what he's received or what he's requested, and we'll go from there. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Chairman Adams. Over the past year, we've been, Brian Haney and myself have been trying to work on this consolidated parks and rec agreement. One of the provisions, and this is our early draft and it will have to change, currently we give the city of Fayetteville $60,000 for indirect costs. And under item 18, it says county should pay the city each year an amount of recovery of its indirect administrative costs in operating consolidated department. This amount would be determined by the city's most recent completed third-party indirect cost allocation plan as of March 1st for the preceding fiscal year. The most, the most current information that the city of Fayetteville has presented us since the fiscal year 2021, it has an amount of $471,900 that they would want us to reimburse them for, for indirect costs. Half of that cost, or approximately 47% of that cost is related to I T, specifically one item, the website being $46,313. So I've asked the city to provide information and documentation related to those items a year, a year ago, and I haven't had to receive a response or to update information. Recently, the city said that they would provide, that indirect cost plan would not be completed until several months later. And so it would be my recommendation that I bring, at the board's pleasure, that I bring this full once they have an updated indirect cost plan.
And, and how much was the I T cost?
The total I T cost was, um, 220,891.
And we have, I guess if you look at it, you got J D Pond as our rec center and I don't know if they include, I guess you include East already because they got a rec center right there. The bulk of ours, and I guess not, wouldn't increase, but the bulk of ours are parks and land. Don't understand why you have I T on parks and lands. Mr. Commissioner, can.
So, Mr. Chair, it's a bleeding on you, Mr. Chair, and you got to peel away, you got to find all kinds of, first of all, can somebody tell me what happens with the 5% recreation tax? Who does that go to?
The city of Fayetteville. Directly to the city of Fayetteville.
Okay, so that has to be adjusted, that has to be talked about on here because it only, we're getting ready to go into a reevaluation here. And, and so, you know, a lot of these came back from the Anne Street, the consolidation of parks and rec, the ad valour tax, we're all cleaning this up 20 years later, but at the end of the day, if they get all that 5 cent, and I'm going to go the attorney on here because apparently there's some restrictions, they can't spend that 5 cents, can they?
They, they must spend it on, in the county recreation district.
Okay, in the count, what does that mean?
Because we're all business, we're all outside the municipality. Well, the county recreation district is now everybody but Fayetteville, Hope Mills. Everybody but Fayetteville, I believe, yeah.
Okay, so it is in total. So that 5 cents goes to their budget, 100%. What about capital? What about the new splash pad and all that? Where'd that come from?
That came from the tax.
So if I made the, every year, there's a request for Parks and Recreation to withhold a portion of the transfer for capital projects, which the county has.
All right, my point is this, when you bring it up and you say $60,000, that seems like nothing, but that's just supposed to be for administrative costs, right? Not operational costs. And that's what the 5 cents is for. Well, there is going to be, I'm like, you know, I T cost, it sounds like that's, that's a big number for, for I T cost, but I, that's more of an operational thing than an administrative thing. So, and it, there should be some sort of accountability to where we should pay, pay our fair portion, but there should be a floor or a ceiling that, you know, if, if the sales tax, I'm sorry, the recreation tax hits a certain amount, then if we need to, true, if we need to bring it up over that, then, then we can talk about that, but just to say, what, these are our expenses, you owe us money, and, and keep in mind, this is 60, the initial request was over almost $500,000, right?
$470,900.
So you've gone 60%, that is 800 times.
And that's from 2021 numbers. I mean, I know my count, my CPA would tell me nobody uses numbers from four or five years ago.
With COVID too?
Yeah, and so I think the manager's point is not to bring this forward until he gets those updated numbers and kind of itemizes what, what, what it is that they're seeking to do. I think that's where we are. I asked him to put this on because he keeps getting the same, like, Commissioner, sign this, send it over to us, and I'm telling him I don't have the authority to do that. So I opened up and then the Commissioners have.
I rounded out. I'm just saying, we got to do more than just administrative costs. We have to look at the package because those costs are going to go up. If, if, if the rates of housing, the revaluation go up, they're going to hit more of that money as it comes in. They have, they're expensive. We don't want to pay all that.
Commissioner Faircroft.
How often do they do their cost allocation plan? Who does?
It should be done every year after the fiscal year's audit is completed. Currently, they use the same venue as we use, is Maximus.
Maximus?
Maximus.
So if it's the boards, I think the manager is asking us that he bring, he not sign it, well, nobody's going to say anything until he brings it back with updated numbers that he's comfortable with. Is that consensus of the board?
Yes.
Okay. I will tell you, and we probably should have put it on here, the manager's also dealing with Spring Lake, with Manchester Fire Department. Saturday I did a call asking why, well, one, asking why the manager hadn't responded, the manager never got an email, plus they were using those old emails that we have. And I think it was, we, with the Manchester Fire District out there, we were paying like $160, maybe $180,000. They requested $700,000 to, for that, the manager, again, the mayor called me Saturday because they were in their budget and said, well, we need this so we can balance, kind of balance their budget, it looks like. But anyway, I don't know. But, and so he asked us some information, they sent some information, it came to me too. So if you know anything about the Manchester area, most of it's rural, there's some, there's some houses, but most of it's rural. And so they sent this breakdown and my, you know, in my little small sphere that I do, I asked, where are those addresses at? Where's the location of those calls? So they sent us all of these calls, indeed, and medical calls, this call, and then some of it looked like it was in Puppy Creek, some of it was in Anderson Creek, some of it was in the town of Spring Lake. And my thing was, we're not paying for that. I'm just, we're just paying for that unincorporated area.